Does that mean we're not on TV?
We're going to get on TV. You didn't see us in the TV up here.
Not yet.
Okay, here we go. Thanks Tara, go ahead.
Okay. Evening council members. For those watching. Site for you to review. And we are pleased to bring the CIP to you. This is kind of a continuation of the plan that started last year. Right. So when we begin the CIP process each year, ask departments to submit requests to our department and then we review them about what we can recommend. This year we received 56 project requests totaling near $30,000 from all departments. And you can see when we say departments, it's all city departments, department and schools as well. The department requests include 4.6 million in state funding, which is primarily for street paving and some related equipment. And the remaining 28.4 million would require city funding from general fund, debt issuance and the utility fund support. Obviously, we can't do all of these projects. So therefore, there are some projects that are beyond the five-year plan. But the five years between FY '26 and FY '30, it does total about 18.8 million, which is almost eight million for school projects, four million for state-funded projects, one and a half million for utility fund projects, and 5.3 in city department projects. Now, the next step in the CIP process is to have planning commission review the plan. So on September 16th, we presented the CCIP at the planning commission work session. And then at their October 21st meeting, we held a public hearing and the planning commission did approve the recommended CIP by the... There were two speakers at this meeting that discussed the desire for more sidewalks in the city. And as a result, the planning commission did recommend that sidewalks be considered for future CIP. While preparing the recommended CIP, we look at funding options available and have some budget aspirations. The city manager does recommend increasing real estate taxes to support the projects recommended by departments. Also, we aspire to maintain the debt service support and increase it if possible. And you may recall from last year, we started with a recommendation for debt financing over five years. So FY '25 is the first year of that financing plan where we plan to issue $3 million in the spring. And that is for the replacement of one school bus and the Pocson High School HVAC system. We're doing the issuance in each spring. That way, the debt service would start the following fiscal year. And also for the school projects that are financed with them a chance to get the money at the end of the school year. So that way, they can do things over the summer. So the HVAC project would be this coming summer. So our recommendation would be to continue with that plan that is laid out over the next five years. So the recommended CIP includes the following for FY '26. So if this is approved, then I would work to incorporate this into the budget. So the recommendation for general fund support is for two police vehicle replacements. And we, you'll see the replace one to two each year in the plan. The facility condition assessment for City Hall and Fire Station 1 will analyze various elements of the building, such as mechanical and electric systems, as well as the HVAC roof, windows and doors, and also a financial system. For debt financing in fiscal year '26, the recommendation is for a total of 2.9 million to replace the roof at Pocson High School, replace two fire chief vehicles, and replace a dump truck for public works. State funding would be for street paving and a ditch mower arm extension attachment for, which is important for street maintenance. For the next four years of the plan for FY '27 through FY 2030, these are the projects that we would recommend for general fund support. The phone system replacement is for schools and city. We share that phone system. Two police vehicle replacements per year. There's watershed studies here. We previously completed a study for Oxford Muse, and you may recall that we had ARPA funding for that. So we have more watershed studies. Shipwreck Island improvements. I have more on another slide, so we will talk more about that coming up. Two-tree park improvements include a playground, multi-purpose play surface for basketball and other games like four-square... Blueway trails. Park's hopes to create a waterway system where people can canoe and have wildlife in the city. We also have a sweeper that's used for clearing streets and also replacement of City Hall shingle roof and siding. The flat roof structure of the City Hall was replaced in FY '24, but the shingles still need to... The siding is worn as well. And the idea is to match the siding with the new public safety... Together here at this campus. Debt service support for fiscal year '27 through '2030 includes a fire engine replacement. And last month, you remember, we did approve the, or you approved the purchase of the demo fire... It's here with the lead times of the trucks that we're seeing. Two school bus replacements in '28, two in '29, and one in FY '30. Elementary school HVAC replacement in '28 included traffic support system in '28, '29. Island, the elementary school gym floor spacing, and medic 21 replacement. Wanted to discuss Shipwreck Island improvement project. Note that this is a revenue sharing project with VDOT. In June of 2021, city council approved submission of the application. And in August 2021, increased the application amount 700,000. Because this is a revenue sharing program, it is a one-to-one match. So VDOT approved the application and allocated $350,000 based on that application. But since the time of the application, the project cost estimate has increased to 975,000. So this means that we need an additional 275,000 than was originally planned. So this would increase the general fund support for that project. The costs for the project are recommended for preliminary design to begin in the summer of '27, and construction would begin in '28, using both general fund and debt service to support city share of the project. Utility fund, these are supported by sewer project revenues and fund balance. So the recommendation over the next three years would be pump station upgrades for pump station 1, replacement pumps for other stations throughout the city. Pump station force main upgrades are planned for pump stations 12, 13, 14, and 15. There's also recommendations for the vacuum trailer truck, which is 23 years old. The utilities department has been working to install backup generators at the pump stations. So this would continue that progress that they're making at pump stations 5 and... At pump stations 46 and 15A. So during your regular meeting tonight, we have advertised a public hearing, and you have a resolution for consideration of approval. Are there any questions? We have some department heads here. If you have any questions about projects.
Sarah, go ahead.
If I could, just add two things. One, I appreciate the fact that Tara highlighted the Shipwreck Island project because it's been some time since council authorized us going forward. One, we wanted to affirmatively put it on your radar screen again, that this is something that we move forward with at council direction. There is state match coming, but it never seems to come quick enough to meet the escalation in construction costs. Our estimated cost is significantly higher than what we first thought. We want to make sure that you're aware of that. In case for any reason council wanted to discontinue that project, you would have until we began to spend money on it in '27 to do that. I'm not suggesting you do that, but I just wanted to footnote that for you. And finally, the recommendation from the planning commission that future versions of the CIP include sidewalk projects, staff stands ready once council can identify the roads and the size of the roads if... To begin that work on your behalf, but we can't begin to develop projects in all the things that come with that until we know where you want to go. So if council is tires of moving forward, perhaps sometime in the first or second quarter of upcoming calendar year, if you could provide us some direction, we'd be in a better position to include something specific in next year's CIP submission.
Okay. Any questions to Tara? Any questions of the department heads?
How many school buses do we have now? Okay. I know that they're doing multiple duty because they basically have four routes a day. So the miles add up. When I was reading, between 147 and 237,000 miles, which is amazing when you just think of small little town, make that many miles. But I know they build, they add up because they're constantly on the road from seven in the morning until whatever.
Yeah, there runs outside of the city as well.
Right. Okay.
Question. So I did hear that we kept the fire engine one replacement in there. And that's so when it comes up, we can look at the current inventory of vehicles, see what the lead times are, what the wear is, and then use that as a placeholder.
Follow up a little bit on what Randy said about sidewalks. It'll be this council, not me, but this council can get that project underway. But the city manager has to have some guidance about where do you want these sidewalks? Where do you want to put them? They're not going to be able to put them all over the city all at one time. There probably are some areas that really do need them. So the sooner the council decides where you want to start, the better for our community. I know it's going to become an issue, already an issue. So I think the fact that, you know, what you said here tonight, Randy, should encourage citizens who are all serious about doing some sidewalks somewhere in this community. It falls on council to make that decision. You know, where do you want them? And then once that's determined, and the city manager has the rest of it to do in terms of, you know, drainage, do we have to take property, what's out of the road are they going on? Lot, lot goes into it. So the sooner, I think, the better. If council get together and locate where those places are that you want to put sidewalks.
I don't think we would know which side of the road until engineer looks at it and tells us where to ride away in the ditch and how much property and all that stuff because that's a big portion of the cost.
Yeah, but part of it carries, you're going to have to decide what side of the road to put it on for sure. Some, you know, some ditches may have to be piped, some may not. You know, it just depends. The calls that I've had about sidewalks is, you know, I actually ran into a guy at Food Line that was here when we discussed, I think you were on council at the time.
I was.
We had discussed putting sidewalks on both sides of the Florida route. And I think it was in this room. It was full. And it was standing outside. And if it had a tree, they would have hung us that night. But it's, you know, it's something the city needs. And you know, you guys can work that out. And I'm sure wherever you decide to put them, be the place to put them. I don't know that we need to be dictated by the community as to where to put them. I think council will decide that themselves. And then give Randy direction so that he can move forward with whatever the issues are. Okie doke.
If there's nothing else on the CIP, we've got another work session pertaining to changes, proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, appendix A and appendix D, the sign ordinance. Bali and Thomas are here and...
We've been sitting here a hell of a minute.
I didn't get that up here.
We'll be up momentarily. It is.
Doesn't help the people at home, unfortunately.
I already got the decal.
Thank you.
I already got the decal. Thank you. Okay, I'm here to talk to you all about Appendix A and Appendix B, zoning and signs respectively. I'll start off by saying good evening to all the council members and staff here. Okay, when we look at the zoning ordinance, there's a lot of little changes, but there's really four big changes. The first big change, I would say, would be the rewriting of the Village Commercial, General Commercial, and Research Development Districts to provide uniformity of requirements as it pertains to the entrance corridor along Victory Boulevard, Collector Streets, and Local Streets. The reason we do this is that it provides for the protection of the entrance corridor characteristics, encourages the orientation of uses towards interior collector roadways or local streets, and allows for green area buffers. And we'll get to that momentarily. The second big change was Resolution 4095, which was approved by the City Council on 7/24 of September. Has now been incorporated into the General Commercial District regulations. Prior to that, I came across quite by accident one of the Economic Development Authority meetings and realized that we had made no provisions to include it at all. Number three, the elimination of waivers and redundancies in the planned development districts and planned unit development districts. The reason for this is that I think we've all seen that, you know, 20 feet is not a very big buffer. And, you know, and 40 feet's not all that big, but you need to protect it where you can. That's the emphasis behind that. Number four, the deletion of Article 12 as it has been used only once in 24 years. And luck with the habit, we have a new application in for the people who want to use it. But there's no incentive for its use unless you really own a huge piece of property, particularly with the ability to connect structures with a walkway, which we have. A covered walkway up to 50 feet, you can connect structures and they'll be part of One thing to keep in mind for all the research and development in general commercial districts along Victory Boulevard, really from With Creek on towards York County, is that you get a 20-foot HRSD Hampton Road Sanitation District easement. It was originally for 30 feet, 10 of it was a temporary easement, so 20 feet is left. I have tried to depict it short of having Art Pro and being able to do a Bob Pro, this is the best I can do, but there you have it, 20 feet. Okay, so what does this mean? I did take some pictures and unfortunately, the right of way and easement are not as good as I would like them to be. But essentially, going westbound on Victory Boulevard, you've got the right of way up to about right here, and then you've got the 20-foot. I hear you have the right of way. You'll notice that it's going just north of this ditch here, and then you've got the These came out a lot better here than I thought they were. This is going, this is going eastbound here. Oh, sorry. And you can see the easement, the right of way, and you see the ditch. Here, the ditch is not pronounced going westbound, but you can see the termination of the right of way, more or less, and the easement, HRSD easement. And here, I really didn't put any, this is close to near Yorktown Road. Over on this side is the right of way, and then this side is the easement. Okay, first thing I'll do is talk about shared property line with Collector Local Street. There is this language in the ordinance for collectors and local streets off in the General Commercial and the Research and Development Districts. So what I did is essentially continued that, realizing that there probably isn't going to be General Commercial, Research, and Development anywhere else except along Victory Boulevard. But regardless of properties that may be in General Commercial, Research, Development Districts, not along Victory Boulevard are unchanged, except accounting for a 20-foot HRSD easement if it's present. So what that really means is I haven't changed anything, except just to account for a possible 20-foot HRSD easement. Setback is 50 foot from the property line or 20 feet from HRSD easement, whichever is the greater restriction. Parking is 20 feet from the property line or at least 20 feet from the HRSD easement, whichever is the greater restriction. Like I say, you're probably not going to have to deal with the HRSD easement here, and you're probably not even going to have to deal with the General Commercial, Research, Development Districts. But I did continue that just in case. Okay, now we get to Village Commercial. This is where they have a shared property line with Victory Boulevard. The only change here is to require setbacks where a lot abuts the right of way of Victory Boulevard, rather than requiring the setback on lots of uses that directly access Victory Boulevard. I'll give you an example. The Public Safety Building, which is great, and you saw earlier tonight, that actually accesses off of City Hall Avenue. So the argument could come that, okay, it doesn't directly access off of Victory Boulevard. In this case, we imposed a 25-foot buffer and everything that we normally would, but rather than go through that argument with potential developers that are not affiliated with the city or, we just thought the language was better where we say the lot abuts right of way. That makes it simple. I mean, if you're but Victory Boulevard, you've got to go with the setback. Okay, could have the effect of requiring the buffer more often. We're still requiring a 75-foot setback, which is current, a 25-foot buffer, and no parking allowed in front. In Village Commercial, there is no parking allowed in front. That's an important distinction, and that's true anywhere in the city for the Village Commercial District. Okay, when we get to General Commercial, again, 20-foot permanent Hampton Road Sanitation District easement along North Side. The proposed setback regulations reflect the presence of the easement, as well as the abutting versus direct access language I referenced with the Village Community. So parking and buffers remain at 25 feet, except they factor in the HRSD easement. And I'll come to a drawing here in a minute. Front parking is only allowed per ordinance 11.2-11B3. And what it states is if the physical character of the property, including dimensions or topography, or other extraordinary situation or condition precludes the parking area of being located in the side or rear yards. That is a finding that would have to be made as we move forward with that. The bottom line being, putting parking in a front is very difficult to do. Okay, so here we have the drawing. Proposed setback is 75 feet or 25 feet from the HRSD easement, the greater restriction, which would be 75 feet. The current setback, excuse me, current setback provisions are 45 feet. And we require 25-foot landscape buffer and parking is setback if the parking is even allowed. I just, oh, hit the wrong button. Again, in Research Development, there's a 20-foot permanent Hampton Road Sanitation District easement. Research and Development proposed setback regulations reflect the presence of the easement, as well as, as I said before, the abutting versus direct access language activating the setback requirement. Parking and buffers are proposed at 50 feet from the property line or from the HRSD easement. It is an increase from 25 feet. Front parking again is only allowed per 11.2-11B3. We covered that before, but basically, dimensions or topography or other extraordinary situation precludes the parking area from being located inside a rear yard. Again, putting it in the front yard is going to be very difficult. Here's a sample drawing of the Research and Development of property. Current proposed setback is 75 feet or 50 feet from the HRSD easement, which is the greater restriction, or the greater restriction, which would be 75 feet. In fact, the proposed setback is actually greater than the setback from the HRSD easement. But the reason I left that language in there was in case the HRSD easement is somehow added to. I mean, nothing's, no plans that we're aware of for that to happen, but 50-foot landscape buffer and parking setback when it's allowed. You can see the setback of 75 feet and basically where your 50-foot landscape buffer would There are possible reductions upon the presence of certain environmental features, including but not limited to the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area and/or non-title weapons. The City Council may, upon the holding of a public hearing for both the Planning Commission and City Council, approve or deny a reduction of any or all of the above required setbacks on a case-by-case basis. Okay, so that really does it with the Village Commercial, General Commercial, and Research and Development changes in setback. I want to move now to the Resolution 4095, which I referenced earlier in the meeting. And what we did in working with the Planning Commission is we worked to thread this together with the General Commercial provisions. Development shall be of a gateway quality, including site layout, building design, construction materials, building uses, and landscape design. What we want to do is we want our entrance corridor to look like it should look, which is, you know, a welcoming place into the city of Pecoson. Development shall enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Pecoson to include opportunity to remain in the city for jobs, shopping, dining, recreation, and/or entertainment. That's taken directly from Resolution 4095. As is number eight, the city shall continue its efforts to develop the Economic Development Authority-owned assemblage, the six parcels that they own, and to further refine a specific development vision which allows the site to be marketed for specific rather than general uses. The city shall consider public-private partnerships for develop on the EDA-owned assemblage that may include increased opportunities for cultural regulations or recreational rather or entertainment uses that will be revenue generating for the city. Okay, we had to do permitted uses. Permitted uses in general commercial districts shall include, and it's taken directly from 4095 again, regional sporting goods store, public-private recreation, and or cultural center project, high-tech manufacturing, which is defined in the zoning ordinance, and a medical facility such as hospitals, trauma centers, urgent care facilities, nursing homes, facilities for physical rehabilitation slash therapy, chiropractic services, dental services, psychological and psychiatric services. That's a mouthful. Prohibitive uses on the EDA-owned Big Woods Property Zones in the GC District. Development shall not be fully residential in nature, including single-family homes, apartments, townhomes, and condominiums. Now, originally in 4095, a prohibited use, two prohibited uses were included, public development and public buildings. But we thought with the passage of time, we may actually be interested in some public development or public buildings. So we did not prohibit those. And developed in pieces, so development shall not be developed in pieces.
Can I speak to this real quick? Because not everybody sitting around this table or watching on TV was around and paying attention to this issue when council approved it in 2017. Following the community discussion, possibility of the Walmart community market, it became real clear to us what the public didn't want over there, which was anything akin to a Walmart community market. So once that had resolved itself, we worked with the Planning Commission and the City Council and the Economic Development Authority and a handful of staff, and we had a tracted retreat. And the purpose of the retreat was to say, well, now that we know what we don't, I have a better inclination of what we don't want, what do we want? And so this was a process, there was a continuing work group that was put together to develop some of these things. And one of the final steps was to actually incorporate it in the zoning ordinance. So this is the last step in the recommendations, to go ahead and memorialize the decisions that City Council made at that time in adopting that ordinance as it relates to and the Big Woods property. So if you weren't around in 2017, you may have missed the context. I think it's important to lay that out for the folks at home that may not know why we even did 4905. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the third rather large change. Relation to planned development district regulations, other zoning regulations. What this does is puts any planned development districts which governs both the mixed Houston and waterfront commercial, that you can modify any provision of those articles, except for perimeter buffers as specified in those articles, and required setbacks and thoroughfare requirements along Victory Boulevard or Collector Local Street as specified in the underlying zoning district. I think we've all realized to some extent that, you know, 20 feet is not a lot, and 40 may not be a lot in some instances, but it's better than nothing. And that was really the impetus behind that. That is reflected again in the mixed use section where the 40-foot perimeter buffer requirement, this is the landscape requirement around the perimeter except for the roads of the building. It cannot be waived nor variance salt. And again, the idea of this is that when you do have a planned unit development, you actually put in the buffers and the setbacks that were originally envisioned in the code. I got to get my hand off that button, yes, yeah, I do. The last thing is Article 12, the deletion of Article 12 concerning accessory dwelling units. This is rather onerous. Well, I don't know, there's no incentive for this, for the use of legislature of a very large property owner. As I said before, it's been used once in 24 years and may be used again because the application came in before today. But there's really very little incentive for its use. It requires twice the acreage, two acres, requires you to connect sewer. We just haven't had a lot of people bite on this. Now, some locations nearby have recently done some language work with accessory dwelling units, and I've got to tell you, they're a lot more... units, and I've got to tell you, they're a lot more, if I can use this word, liberal than our current regulations. So, but we have, I hesitate to call it an out, but we do have this covered walkway breezeway up to 50 feet that can be used to connect structures. That's what we found that people more often do, is they connect the structures, and that way they're both considered part of the principal dwelling. In the future, as y'all probably already know, the Chesapeake Preservation Area needs additional amendment. We may not make any promises, this will be up to, staff will have to consider this. We may propose to move it to Chapter 34 of the City Code, which deals with environmental regulations. The floodplain article shares a lot of overlap or works in tandem with Chapter 42 of the City Code, floods. It could perhaps be integrated together. Again, that's work for a different day. Proposed amendments will be necessary from time to time. We're thinking that we probably need to do something with the planned open space requirements. So that will probably be coming, yeah, fairly soon. I mean, not tomorrow, not next month. Okay, sign ordinance. We are looking at the sign ordinance tonight, too. We really didn't do anything different than this with the sign ordinance, except to find murals. As a mural work of art, such as a painting, applied to and made integral with wall or ceiling, does not meet the definition of a sign. Sign being defined as any outdoor sign, display, device, figure, painting, drawing, message, placard, poster, billboard, or other thing which is designed, intended, or used to advertise or inform. Otherwise, the sign ordinance basically takes all assigned definitions and regulations found in zoning ordinance to the sign ordinance. So this is part of a continuing effort on the part of staff to locate all of these regulations in one place. And I will state, too, Article D signs, we're talking about signs on personal property here. We're not talking about right-of-way signs. We're not talking about camp, which I know there were a lot of campaign signs in the right-of-way. That's actually in Article 6 of the City Code. And, you know, it may be time to look at that again. But again, that's work for a different day. We're talking about certain ordinance provisions on private property owner. With that, I'll take your questions, any questions you might have.
How far, what's the setback on the apartments, legacy?
Well, the legacy apartments, they're all setback 20 feet from the right-of-way.
20 feet?
Yes. Basically, you have one row of pines.
Some of the setbacks that you showed in the earlier slides were like 75 feet.
Yes.
So that'll get to 20 feet.
Well, that was.
I guess what I'm asking is there a danger, is there a danger of something on the opposite side of the road?
Well, you've got a fair amount of planned unit development land on the other side of the road that could be activated as part of the planned unit development.
I'm trying to figure out, wouldn't it? Let me try this one. So the current ordinances allow for the developer to request waivers, all kinds of things, including perimeter buffers. And the changes that Wally's proposing, particularly in the third of the four elements of change, are to make it so that those perimeter buffers can't be waived or modified.
Okay.
Because there are specific provisions in your current ordinance that allows the developer as part of a master plan to request any variations, modifications, that they may wish you to consider as part of the process. This would curtail that as it pertains to the perimeter buffers. We'd guard against that.
Is this specifically for the corridor coming down Victory Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay, not for another place, okay.
Wally?
And really, that's the only area you would use?
Well, under the sign definition, what says intended or used to advertise or inform, that going to encompass a, what I call a directional sign, like an arrow that says, turn this way, or sign that says exit, they're going to all be informed signs, they'll be included also?
They would be informative signs, yes.
Wally, excuse me, back to the accessory dwelling units. So the current land size that's required for someone to have property, did you say it was two acres?
Two acres.
Two acres?
Wally, on the sign thing, when you're talking about murals, someone where to want to paint, like Pecoson, like the old postcards used to be, something like that on the side of what's the food line, would that be considered a sign, or that can be a mural? Again, I just want to make sure.
Well, I mean, it's not advertising bread for sale or anything like that, so yes, that would be a mural.
But if beans, when they put beans on the side of that building, that would be a sign?
That would be a sign, yes.
Got it.
Wally, does that include windows, too, or it has to be a solid wall?
It does include windows. One of the things that really made us think about murals was the Latin restaurant, the food vendors, restaurant over in Chalkwood.
I have a question, going back to the Section 11.1-1, the purpose and intent of the general commercial district. For context, again, for those of us who weren't on council back in 2017, the number eight, where it says the city shall continue its efforts and to further refine a specific development vision, is that refinement of the specific development vision, is that what is laid out in 11.1-2?
I have to look at 11.1-2.
Which is the next page on the.
Oh.
On the, yeah.
Oh, oh.
So yes, is that the vision that City Council shall continue to lay out or refine?
Yes, I mean, that's all from the same references.
So that was the, that was the decision of the vision, was the 11.1-1.
Can I jump in on that, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Having been around during the time, the, once the Planning Commission and the EDA and the City Council had its retreat, the work group came and worked through all of these recommendations. They had, basically had a three-step process. The first step was to present these recommendations, which council adopted. The second step was to engage a market research company that would look at our community and specifically see, of all the things that we had articulated that we wanted, which would be good fits for us? If there are ones that might be impossible, there might be ones that we could get with certain types of incentives or others, it's just perfect for our community so we could refine it more. Council at that time did not decide to move forward with that piece, and so that's kind of what held up the third and final piece, which was, now we know what we want and we know what is possible and realistic for our community, that we actually incorporated into our zoning ordinance. So the second piece didn't get done, but so that's us now moving forward with the final piece. Having essentially skipped the middle piece, it gets us a lot closer to where we were with sort of that market attunement, it never happened. Council wasn't comfortable at that time spending money on the, so we used it as for what it was, which was a very good instructional document. And anyone that asks questions about Victory Boulevard, and specifically, but not only the assemblage, the EDA assemblage, we trotted out your Resolution 40905 to show people the council's vision at that time, that the things that are most often of interest in that conversation is not developing it piecemeal and looking for something that is not focused on residential homes. That helps to shift out a number of inquiries.
Any other questions, Wally?
Just a general comment from most, I guess, council. Is it time to look at signs on right-of-way? We haven't done that in a long time. Just something to discuss for the next year or so.
Do you want me to handle that one?
I think it's time to look at it.
I agree. I think that, you know, we've looked at that ordinance several times over my 15 years. You've made some minor modifications and adjustments. The last time that we, this is about campaign signs, but it's really about all signs, because there are rules about what, how you have to treat specific types of signs, so let's just, for the purposes of my comments, I'm talking about all signs. One of the things that's different since the last time City Council looked at that is the advent of 45-day early voting. So it used to be that campaign signs, only using them as one type of sign, could be up for 30 days prior to the election. Well, the election now is 45 days longer than that. So that's how you get the 75-day campaign signs. And as I'm sure you all have noticed, when those signs start coming up, we get a lot of other signs that come up, too, often without permits. The campaign signs all have permits, everything was done exactly according to ordinance, but...
There were a few, didn't there?
Yeah, so anyway, signs breed more signs, so I think if council would like to bring this back and towards the beginning of the next quarter, we're ready. I actually have a draft of the ordinance, thanks to Mr. Canelo sitting on my desk. So would welcome the opportunity to bring it back and make sure that our current ordinance reflects the current community's appetite for temporary signs in the public, of all types.
When you say the public right-of-way, you're basically referring to the space between the sidewalk and the street?
Generally speaking, if there is a sidewalk, it's the public-owned property on the size of most roads, up through and including City Hall Avenue.
There it is. All right, any other questions, Wally? All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have. Thank you. Okay, sir, we're ready to go.
It's on TV.
Yes. Remember, there's a delay.
All right, okay, welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would please stand, Councilman Hux will have our invocation, allegiance, and our pledge of allegiance. Let's pray.
For Jesus, we come to you in prayer tonight to express our gratitude.
Certified that please.
Mr. Mayor, I move we certify the closed session and that only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by paragraph 2.2-3712. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Okeydoke. Just second.
Second.
All right. Certify our closed session, Ms. Christie.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thanks, Krista. Um, Carrie, you, this would be a good time to, 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 uh, add this item number four under new business.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I propose we amend the agenda to include item number four.
Mm-hmm.
To appoint.
Under new business.
Under new business, to appoint a member to the planning commission from Eastern District.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Is that a second? All right, motion made secondly amend the, uh, agenda. Okay, Ms. Christie.
Councilwoman Bunty.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Krista. Next on our agenda is a special, excuse me, a special presentation. It's an audit presentation, Brown Edwards and Company, LLP. That looks like a familiar face that's coming forward. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, um.
Give us some good news.
Oh, yeah, it's all good, it's all good. Um, Leslie Roberts, your partner on your financials, probably one of the more interesting ones though.
Excuse me, would you pull that mic down closer to you? We can hear you fine with the people at home. Wait, just hold on just a second, we might make some adjustment here, one, just one second.
Can you make sure it's on?
Picture this on. You did?
We've got a different one here.
Sorry, just, we'll get straight in in just a second.
Can you hear that?
Oh, yeah, man.
Okay, can you hear me better?
It's a lot better, yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Again, my name is Leslie Roberts, I'm the partner on your audit engagement, and I'm just going to go through the audit kind of briefly and, and point out some things I realize you guys have the hard copy in front of you. Um, overall, the audit went very well. As you can see, we're presenting a month earlier than normal, so definitely everything went, it went very smoothly. Yeah, should commend Tanya, Tara, and Tracy at the schools for working really hard on this audit and being prepared. They were prepared, they were available throughout the audit, and it went very smoothly. And another thing, we had no new GASBs to implement this year, so that is, that's the first time in several years that we haven't had any new GASBs to implement. Of course, we continue to assist the city and the schools with accounting for leases and, um, subscription agreements. There were previous GASBs that we assist with, we use the software that makes it easier to just spit out the disclosure and the entries. Um, just pointing out some parts of the financials, uh, the very first part of the financials is something as a citizen I find very interesting is the letter of transmittal. It's on Roman numeral pages five through eight, is that eight, thirteen? I can't read Roman numerals. Um, basically, this provides a good profile of the city, it provides information about the history, some of the services that are provided, major initiatives, um, including the Wi-Fi expansion, the legacy Bull Run, Quarter Creek, project information, gives numbers of homes and all that stuff, it's really, it's really cool if, if you're interested in that. Also talks about the enhancements that were made to the South Lawson Park and just a lot of things that the city has been involved in, in the last year. Um, so that's really good information, and it reads like something you're reading, not like a financial statement, so it, it's really informative. Um, the next section is pages one through four, and this is the independent auditor's report, so this is like the bottom line for our audit, where are we able to come in here as an independent third party, look at your records and say that they present fairly the activities of the city and the school board and the, um, balances at the end of the year. And the second paragraph of that report is our opinion, and that's a clean, unmodified opinion, so that's the highest level of assurance that we can give you on your audited financials. Um, moving on, the next section of the financials, pages five through eighteen, is management's discussion and analysis, and again, a lot of good information that reads kind of not like a financial statement, more like a script, and it gives information about fluctuations year over year, reasons for those fluctuations, and so forth, so that gives some really good high-level information. The basic financial statements start on page nineteen and go through page thirty-two. Page nineteen is, is the statement of net position, and that's like your balance sheet, you've got your assets, liabilities, and for, for a governmental entity, what's left over is net position on this type of, on this format of government statements. And your net position is strong, at fifty-eight point three million dollars, and about fifty-one percent of that is invested in capital assets, which is no, no big surprise, but another nine percent is restricted and, uh, another forty percent is unrestricted. Now, of that unrestricted net position, a lot of it you have plans for, and you've assigned it and committed it, but there, you do have unrestricted net position, and you have a strong positive net position, which is good to see. The next statement is a statement of activities, and this is like your income statement, and you had a positive change of about twelve point one million this year, so a very good year. Um, that's kind of made up of some better-than-expected, um, local taxes and investment income, also sewer availability fees that were higher than normal from the legacy project, so, um, and, and the expenses were lower than expected this year as well because of some vacant positions that, during the year. The notes to the financial statements follow the basic financials, and basically, they give more information about some, a deeper dive into some of the activity and the balances in the financials. Um, they go from pages thirty-two to eighty-three. The next section is the required supplementary information, and that gives some budget versus actual information, that's also good reading to see where you've gone over, under budget, and so forth, and gives some information about pension and OPEB activity, which probably isn't, isn't as easy to read. The other supplementary information comes next, and that gives a breakout of the city's component units' financials, so the schools and the EDA are broken out separately in that section. The next section, and I'm just kind of pointing this, this out, is another section, the statistical information. This is not something that we audit, per se, we look at it for reasonableness, but it's a, it's a lot of statistics over a ten-year period of time, so it gives you like demographic statistics, major taxpayer statistics, um, real estate values, uh, principal employers, things like that. All of that's kind of really interesting to look at over a ten-year period of time. The next section is yet another report that we produce as part of our audit. Anytime we audit under governmental auditing standards, we have to issue a separate report on financial reporting, and basically, if there were any issues that we felt like were significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in financial reporting, we report them here, you did not have any. If we had any compliance issues, we're required by state code or by the APA to look at some things in the state code, it's kind of like an audit within an audit, and if we found any compliance issues with state code, we report them here as well, we did not have any of those issues. Um, the next report that we issue is related to the federal funds you receive, basically, the federal, all the federal funds you receive come with compliance requirements and things you have to do to be able to get these funds and keep getting these funds, and we audit some of the programs, we rotate them over the years, and we audit major programs each year. And again, if we had any issues or we had any compliance findings, they would be reported here, we did not have any. So basically, three clean reports, the first one, the big audit report, second one on financial reporting, and now this one on your federal awards and compliance with those compliance requirements, no issues with those. So, um, that's all I had on the basic financials. The, the other document that you guys get is what we typically call the management letter, and a lot of it's just boilerplate, like we've got things that we have to talk about, and they aren't really specific to because, and so I'll point out just a couple of things, um, my contact information and the director on the engagements' contact information and your engagement manager's contact information is in there. If we had any new or changed accounting policies, which you did in this year, no new GASBs, um, we would point them out. If you have any significant estimates in your financials, we point those out in this letter, and you do have some estimates, um, your OPEB liability, pension liability, those are actuarial, actuarially determined, and also your, um, your assets life, you know, how long they're going to last, that's an estimate as well. If we had any audit adjustments, we point them out and we put them in a, in an appendix, and they're in there. Most of the audit adjustments we posted related to leases and those CIBDA's or the GASBs that we help you guys with, or otherwise, they were produced by management and given to us. The, um, there's another section for summary of past adjustments, these are immaterial ones that we didn't post. I think there was one related to the opioid settlement funds that we found out about late, so it wasn't a lot of money, so it didn't get posted, it'll be posted in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, the letter that management signs is in there, and basically, it's like a hold harmless letter, they've given us everything, they've been forthcoming with information and so forth, and that's in there as well. Um, there's also a section about new GASBs, if you want to see what's coming up, down the pike, but there's really not a lot that's going to have, be very, it's going to impact the city very much that's coming up. Um, as always, we continue to collaborate throughout the year with your finance staff, and we provide some continuing education that we invite them to, and we're open for discussion all year long, and Tara takes advantage of that every once in a while, and, um, we like to have that collaborative arrangement. And that's really all I had, I want to thank you for letting us continue to do your audit. Don't have anything bad to report, all good things, and your finance staff should be commended.
Ms. Roberts, thank you so much, you just reminds us again of what a great staff we have, and what a great job you folks do for us. I do have a question for you, though, we, we've been accused, um, maybe over the last ninety days, did you find twenty million dollars anywhere that we're supposed to have covered up?
No, no.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
None of that, none of that.
Thank you. All righty.
Was that a specific question?
Any, any questions of Ms. Roberts? All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to audience for visitors, if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address counsel on any issue, we would like to hear from you now. Number one, okay. Move on to approval of our minutes, we have two sessions, work session October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the work session October sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Second.
All right, good motion made second, we adopt those minutes. Any concerns, comments, any questions? If not, Ms. Christie.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunty.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thanks, Krista. The regular session October sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the regular session October sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Second. All right, good motion made second, we adopt those minutes as well, any concerns, comments, and questions? If not, Ms. Christie.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thanks, Krista. Let's move to item H, we have four public hearings, the first is a resolution to approve the constrained capital improvements plan, CCIP, for FY twenty twenty-six and beyond FY twenty thirty. Randy, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we had a work session earlier this evening on this issue, uh, staff was not planning an additional presentation, however, if you would like one, we can requeue it and do it again, um, otherwise, we're ready to move to the public hearing, uh, as you may, as you may wish.
Okay. I don't think anybody does, and so let's just open the public hearing and ask if anyone in the public, anyone in our audience that would like to address the resolution concerning our constrained capital improvements plan. Okay, I don't see anyone, we close the public hearing and ask for councils. Go ahead, yeah?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution to approve the constrained capital improvements plan, CCIP, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and beyond fiscal year twenty thirty.
All right, thanks, sir.
Second.
All right, motion made second, we adopt the resolution, any concerns, comments? Any questions? If not, Ms. Christie.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunty.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thanks, Krista. Item two, as a public hearing, the ordinance to approve amendments to Appendix A zoning City of Pocosa Code of Ordinances. Randy, any comments for that one?
Really the same, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We, uh, had a work session about an hour ago on this subject, uh, staff can certainly comment, summarize, represent, as you may wish.
I think you did a great job, I don't know that there's anyone here has any questions regarding that, so let's open the public hearing and ask if anyone in our audience that would like to address this, this item. Okay, I see none, we close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of the ordinance to approve amendments to Appendix A zoning of the city of, zoning of the city of Pocosa Code of Ordinances.
Okay, thank you, Angie.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made second, we adopt the ordinance, any concerns, comments, any other questions? If not, Ms. Christie.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunty.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel. Aye.
The motion, motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thanks, Krista. Let's move on to item three, it's an ordinance to approve amendments to Appendix D signs of the City of Pocosa Code of Ordinances. Randy, any comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, the substantive issue here, the definition of murals and to differentiate them from signs on private property.
Okay, any other comments? We did have a briefing on that in our work session, okay. Let's open the public hearing, see if anyone in our audience would like to address that issue. See anybody, so we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the ordinance to approve amendments to Appendix D signs of the City of Pocosa Code of Ordinances.
All right, thanks, sir.
Second.
And thank you, Angie, we have a motion made in second, any other concerns, comments, questions? One, okay, Ms. Christie.
Councilwoman Bunty.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to fourth public hearing. It is an ordinance to adopt Appendix D short-term rentals of City of Pecoson Code of Ordinances. Ms. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the one item that was not subject to the work session that we had, so Mr. Canela is prepared to make a presentation on this.
Okay, let's go ahead to Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Manager, what you have before you tonight is the culmination of a few years' work, tracking some progress of the General Assembly, and then having conversations with you all in the Planning Commission and certainly at a staff level to present you our recommendation with the input of all those just mentioned for how we, as the CDR2, regulate and register short-term rentals. I don't want to be repetitive in the memo I provided, but certainly happy to answer any questions you or council may have.
Okay, Thomas, your memo was great. Your presentation was great. I know we have some concerns on the council, and we, are there any questions of Thomas before we, okay, we need, there's a motion somewhere that we will...
We should have the public hearing.
First?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. Open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in our audience that would like to address this ordinance. I will close the public hearing and ask for action from council.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we postpone consideration of ordinance to adopt Appendix E short-term rentals of the City of Pecoson Code of Ordinances until our next meeting and until we can have another work session to...
Okay, all right. Debbie, thank you. Is, is there a second? Second. I think we have a motion made in second that we delay this action tonight until our next meeting, and we'll have a short work session prior to that, so that we can clear that from our agendas. Okay? Yes?
Can we, for our discussion, would you elaborate a little bit about why, or what you're opposed to, or what it would take to make it acceptable to you?
Sure. I have talked to a lot of citizens since the last work session came up. I believe there was some discussion before, like back in January of 2023, before I came in regarding this, and there was actually approved in a commercial area. And speaking to citizens of the community, I think the language needs to be more restrictive, or do we want to have this in our neighborhoods, our residential area at all? And I just would like to have another work session so we can discuss as a council and maybe talk to citizens between now and then and just kind of get the feel for the community, what this means. I'm looking toward the future as, you know, we're discussing this. It may not be something that we deal with or have a lot of right now, but I can see the future where this may take off, and a lot of the citizens that I talk with, you know, really want to keep that small-town community feel, and I just want to make sure that we give this every consideration before we move forward with the language that was presented tonight.
Okay. We had a motion made second. Are there any other questions, comments? If not, Ms. Christie?
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Kristi. Let's move on to new business. First item, resolution making an appointment to the school board.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution making appointment to the school board with the name of Chris Claude, Central Precinct.
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made second that we adopt the resolution with Chris Claude's name inserted. Any comments or questions regarding that?
I would like to make a comment that...
Yes, sir.
We, once again, had some great candidates come forward. Three in particular were hard to sort between. We had to make a decision, fortunately or unfortunately, and we chose Mr. Claude, who has a great experience with background in Pecoson, both as a police officer and a former member of the city council. It's just made him just a little bit better than the rest of the group, but the other candidates were also excellent. That's it.
Okay. Did we have a second? I didn't hear it. If we did have a second, okay, we have a motion made second that we adopt the resolution with Chris Claude's name inserted. Ms. Christie?
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Kristi. Item number two is a resolution making an appointment to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Mayor, I move we appoint Ms. Amy Rollins, Eastern District, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, term expiring on March 31 of 2025.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made second that we adopt the resolution with that name inserted. Any concerns or comments? No questions? Ms. Christie?
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item three, is a resolution making appointment to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointment to the Planning Commission within, inserted of Charles Hartley for the Western Precinct with the terms expiring November 30th, 2026.
Thanks, Debbie. Okay, motion made second that we adopt the resolution with that name inserted.
Second. He said aye.
What did I do?
No, you're fine.
Oh, okay. Okay, Christie?
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Kristi. Then we had, we amended our agenda to add number four there. It's also a resolution making appointment to the Planning Commission. Freeman?
Mr. Mayor, I approve, we appoint Mr. David Peterson, Eastern District, to the Planning Commission. His term will expire November 30, 2028.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made second that we adopt the resolution with Mr. Peterson's name inserted. Any concerns, comments regarding that? If not, Ms. Christie?
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, Kristi, thank you very much. Comments, city manager, Ms. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three things. First, I just wanted to thank everyone that worked together to support yesterday's Veterans Day ceremony. It takes a whole bunch of people, and, you know, then the fact it rained for a little bit, it really couldn't have been better, and a lot of people are to be thanked for that. Just a public notice that for the balance of the week, portions of the Oxford Run walking trail closed as the legacy developer is installing culvert pipes to connect their stormwater pond. Be out of commission for a few days. And finally, just as a follow-up to your last city council meeting and the public comments from several citizens regarding speeding, the police department, engineering, myself, we've continued to work on what we might be able to do, and one of those things is something that the police chief has been working on with me, and we're moving forward to acquire an unmarked car that'll have not only a standard radar rig in it, but also a portable rig, which will allow us to post up in driveways where invited and have radar that works at the same time. So, but driveway type of enforcement as well as roadside type, and I'm real pleased to say that I signed off on that purchase order today. So, that's, that's one piece of the approach to that issue, and with that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Randy. Angie?
First of all, congratulations to finance staff on the very successful financial audit. We appreciate everything that you do. I've mentioned this before, and this probably won't be the last time, but I just, I think it is so important that folks at home can get a lot of updates from the city right to their email box. A lot of good things just this week, there was an email sent out about the closing, temporary closing of Oxford Run that Randy just mentioned, leaf pickup, the HRSD construction notice. There's really quality information that goes out, very important information. You just go to the city's website, there's a big blue box in the middle of the page that Citizen, I think Service Center, has a GIS portal, online bill pay, news flash, or the notifications. Click on the notifications, you can get agendas, you can get news flash items, really worthwhile to do. And then also, congratulations to Jeannie Hubbard, congratulations to Keith Fai, and to Mayor-elect David Hux on the election.
Weren't you running as well?
I was.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that all, Angie?
Oh, the verdant cluck is lovely. It's really beautiful.
Beautiful it is. Okay, Debbie?
Thank you, Gordon. And to elaborate on Councilwoman Emmett's comments, I have the pleasure of having Councilwoman elect Jeannie Harvey Hubbard in our presence tonight, so congratulations, Jeannie, as well on Councilwoman Emmett and Councilman Fai. And just like to share some thoughts about the election that we've just held. There is no greater calling in life than service to others, and I'm grateful for the opportunity that the voters have given me, once again, to continue public service in my hometown. So, thanks so much for that. Welcome guidance and suggestions from anybody, so please don't hesitate. Thank you to all the candidates who ran for office, not for the faint of heart. So, I commend everybody that put forth the effort to run. Thank you to all that voted. Thanks so much for taking advantage of the right that our veterans over centuries have fought to defend. Regardless of how a person voted, I very much appreciate that, and all seven of us are here to serve and represent as best we can, regardless of political perspectives or how they vote. I'm also grateful for all those that have reached out to me. I did not expect this, and it is humbling, but between emails, text messages, voicemails, word of mouth, posts on social media, I have received many hundreds of comments. I had no idea, but I can express my gratitude for those, and I can share with you that they are very encouraging and uplifting. So, thank you so much for that. Also, regarding the election, I'd like to thank and offer a word of praise to our general registrar and director of elections, Ms. Tammy Pinckney, and our deputy registrar, Ms. Tara Moore, for the job that they did, due in no small part to their leadership. Generally, vote close to 80% in this community. That is an extremely high percentage of participation. So, thank you to Ms. Pinckney and Ms. Moore, as well as our electoral board members that provide oversight and governance to our election process in Pecoson, Mr. Louis Littlepage, our chair, Ms. Jennifer Barnes, our vice chair, and Mr. Lynn Paul, our secretary. And thank you as well to all the volunteers and all the poll workers, especially since the early voting starts September 20 of this year and extended all the way through November 5. So, that is extremely demanding. Thanks to all for their efforts to make that happen. I'd also like to share praise for our financial staff, our director of finance, Ms. Tara Woodruff. Thanks also to Ms. Leslie Roberts. She is descended from domestic, so her ties to this community goes way back as well. But our financial department has received for decades the highest possible recognition given by the state of Virginia for financial reporting, and we've received, once again, another clean, unmodified audit. So, that is as good as it can possibly be. So, cannot thank you all enough, and Gordon, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you. Debbie?
Just want to, again, just continue with the congratulations for those in the election and welcome Jeannie, who will be with us shortly in January, up here at the diocese up here. Want to welcome her, and it's, it's a very humbling and gratifying experience to serve the citizens and also working with the other council members here. We, I think we work together well, and we can really share our opinions, and we work together to come, you know, for what I think is best for the community. I appreciate that. And also for staff, they put a lot of time in preparing board packets, the agenda, and I thank them for the time they spend answering questions, the questions that come up, you know, last minute, and they're always willing to entertain these questions and explain, and I'm just very appreciative to that. Financial piece, the school and the city, I know they work very hard all year. It's not just, you know, during audit time that they're working. It's a year process and, and planning that and making sure. I appreciate that as well, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Keith?
Yes, sir. A couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank, as I mentioned a little earlier, all the applicants that have applied for positions on the boards and commissions. We can't run the city without those people. We had some great ones for the opportunities that we had openings, and we have a few more openings still, so if you're inspired to help with the city, please apply. Second thing is, congrats on, hard to believe it's been this long, a successful seafood festival. It has been, happened since our last meeting, so Gretchen, you all did a great job. I had a lot of fun at it, as I always do, and the weather was perfect. Thanks for keeping that going. Ditto to the comments on the smooth election. We actually, for those that keep track of it, had more early voting than we had Saturday, voting on Election Day, which is pretty good. Other comments on the sidewalk effort, obviously, it's gaining momentum. Those that are interested, please let us know your opinions on it. I know the Planning Commission was talking about it at their last meeting, and of course, it came up during our work session today, so we'll be looking forward to more of that in the future. As the mayor pointed out, we need to have, we have the council, some work to do, so it'll probably come the first of the year. And last but not least, Mobile Food Pantry will be this Thursday. New location, Emes Baptist Church, starting at, don't come there too early, please, because we might have a little bit of a problem traffic-wise off Yorktown Road, but we'll be coming into the behind Emes Baptist Church, basically going the backwards, the way the route is now, to do that, but it starts at 10 o'clock and goes until noon. We know people start to queue a little before that, but please try and make it no earlier